Is Al on yet?
I haven't heard him yet.
I think he, I think this is, this might be him.
Al?
Just admitted him.
This is Al Patterson. Am I in?
Hey, Al.
Hi, Al.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good. Have we, uh, oh, we haven't started yet, right?
We're being recorded.
No, I got that. We started the meeting.
No.
In another, uh, thirty seconds, probably.
Okay.
Bill, whenever you're ready.
All right.
The April sixth, twenty twenty, meeting of the Lebanon zoning board of a j-
Uh-oh, he wigged out.
Okay, so is everyone else seeing, uh, Bill Fries?
Yeah, Bill's frozen and no, no audio.
Okay, let's see if... Bill?
He probably overloaded all of the poverty lane circuits here with his video.
Okay, um, hey, hey, Jen, are you on, are you on here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Um, yes, I can. Maybe, uh, Bill, if you can hear me, maybe you can try to get off and then come back on. And then Jen, um, would you mind, uh, as, as the vice chair just opening the meeting and then I'll, um, and then handing it back over to, to me and I can go through a few notes on how this is going to work?
Yes, um, sorry, let me, uh, okay, so I'll go ahead and call to order the Lebanon zoning board of adjustment meeting for Monday, April sixth. Um, and Tim, I'll turn it over to you for some, for an overview of how we'll conduct the virtual meeting here.
Great, thank you. Um, I'm actually just gonna- Hello?
Uh, should we do a roll call?
Uh, well, we're gonna do that at the end of my, uh, prepared remarks here. Um, this is a, this is more or less a, a script that, um, the city has developed in order to, uh, just provide as much information upfront about these meetings in, in the most consistent manner possible. So, uh, I am gonna be reading, uh, from this. Um, good evening, due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number twelve issued on March twenty-third, twenty twenty, uh, in accordance with executive order twenty twenty dash zero four, uh, the zoning board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen, uh, to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with emergency order number twelve, uh, the city has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone, uh, with potential additional access by video, uh, provide public notice, uh, we've taken action to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing, uh, accessing the meeting. And we provided a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. Uh, for this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the board, uh, have the ability to communicate contemporaneously. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, to participate in the meeting by visiting lebaninnh.gov/live. Uh, and by clicking on the pertinent, uh, listed meeting, that being the April sixth zoning board meeting. Uh, instructions on how to attend are provided on the webpage, lebaninnh.gov/live. Uh, to assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, uh, all speakers are asked to identify themselves, uh, and to spell their first and last names, uh, before, before beginning to speak, uh, if, as needed. Uh, in order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device in order to reduce the video feed, uh, and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. Uh, to improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, uh, microphones will be muted by the moderator until you have a question or comment. Uh, for people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the button on the screen. For people calling in by phone, please press, uh, star six to unmute yourself. Uh, if anyone has a problem with access during the course of the meeting, uh, tonight, please email planning@lebaninnh.gov. Again, that's planning@lebaninnh.gov. Uh, David Brooks, the planning director, will be monitoring that email address, so please feel free to use it. Uh, you can also use the chat function on Microsoft Teams, uh, but please use the chat, chat function, uh, for technical questions, uh, only. Uh, and that, I, I would ask that, we would ask that to apply to everybody, board members, uh, and members of the public and applicants. Uh, chat room is really just for, if you need it, to contact us for, for technical questions or if you're having difficulties. In the event that there are, we find that there are, uh, technical, technical difficulties in general with this meeting, and that we are really unable to hold it for some reason, it will be adjourned and, uh, rescheduled. Um, please note that, and this is very specific to the zoning board, but please note that in any case, uh, we anticipate that the public hearings tonight will be continued to a special meeting of the zoning board to be held on Monday, April twentieth at seven P M. Uh, this will allow for additional public testimony in the event that anyone, uh, is unable to access the meeting, which we can't know until, until this meeting is over in, in all likelihood. Uh, any such questions or comments should be sent to, uh, and to our email address at planning@lebanin.gov. Uh, again, that's planning@lebaninnh.gov, uh, as, uh, no later than the end of the day on Monday, April thirteenth. Uh, for additional information, please call the planning and development department at six oh three, four four eight, one four five seven. Just a couple more notes, um, all, all votes at, that are taken during this meeting, so for example, a vote will be needed to continue each hearing. Uh, those votes will be taken, uh, by roll, uh, by roll call vote. Uh, please note that there may- Maybe, please be patient as we're trying to manage that delay. Um, and then, uh, did just want to point out that the meeting is being recorded and, uh, it will be available on the city's website at lebaninnh.gov/AgendaCenter, lebaninnh.gov/AgendaCenter. So, um, we, uh, would like to begin the meeting by taking a roll call attendance and then I'll, uh, hand it over to Bill if he's back. Um, uh, but, uh, when, um, so I'd, so I'd ask each zoning board member to please state your name. And then you, you also need to state whether there's anyone in the room with you during the meeting, and that's, that's a requirement under RSA ninety-one A. So, um, state, state whether you're present, state your name, and then, um, whether or not there's anyone in the room with you. And then once the roll call is finished, uh, Bill, if he's back, can take it, can take it away, or, or Jen in his stead.
Let me in.
There he is, Mr. Chair. So... Jen, I can't-
You have to unmute.
Hey.
I didn't realize I was muted. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, does he need to be let into the meeting or did you let him in?
He, looks like he's here. You're here, right, Bill?
I am here, but I have no picture on the screen.
Um, I mean, it's, it's not absolutely necessary, but it might just be a matter of turning on your, uh, your video camera.
No, the video camera's on. No, it's not. That's my fault. Sorry. All right, uh, I'm William Copan here from the chairman of the planning board and I am present at my house with nobody else in the room.
Zoning board, zoning board, not planning board.
Oh, I was in the Wayback Machine. Zoning board.
I'm Jennifer Mercer. Uh, I am present and there is nobody in the room with me, uh, and I'm the vice chair of the zoning board.
Dan Nash and I'm flying solo.
Al Patterson, I'm present, I'm home, and my wife and daughter are in the house with me.
Hi, this is David Newlove and I am by myself in my office.
And this is Jonathan Perez. I'm present by myself in my office.
Uh, this is Jeremy Katz. I'm, uh, on my own in my house.
On my own and in my house.
Who is that last person?
Paul, can you restate your name?
My name is Paul McDonough, M C D, O N O, U G H.
All right, we have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for March second, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
Hi, Al Patterson. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. I do have, um, some comments referencing minutes, so.
That, that's later.
Dan Nash, I'll second it.
Uh, Mr. Patterson, your, your corrections or additions?
Not necessarily corrections and reviewing the minutes. Um, there's several conversations that were detailed by specific board members and they are identified, uh, sub-board. And, and I, and I think our, our previous minutes were more specific as to who's talking, and I think that's important to know, you know, for any future, um, discussions down the road or to recall things. So I was, I mean, the, the minutes are good. I just, I just wish that they would identify who is speaking a little better, that's all.
I, I think that's a valid comment. I agree. Um, are there, are there any corrections or additions from anybody else? I have two corrections. One, uh, Jonathan Perez was absent from the meeting and that was not noted on, on page one of the draft. And on page five, on line five, it says that the chair closed the public hearing. Um, if I said that, it was a mistake because the public hearing is clearly going to be open tonight. Um, and we continued the meeting, um, so it should be clear from the minutes that the public hearing is going to be available tonight. Anything else from the minutes? Uh, we're gonna have to take a, uh, an identified vote of the members. Um, Mr. Patterson?
I vote to approve the minutes with the suggestions.
Ms. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes, oops.
Um, Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
All right, and I vote yes. So the motion carries unanimously. Um, Tim, I have a procedural question that you can help me out with. Um, at the last public hearing, on the first public hearing on our agenda tonight, uh, Mr. Katz was appointed. And tonight, Mr. Perez is present. Who should be sitting on this meeting?
I, I think it's within your discretion. It might make sense to allow the person who sat on the, the, sat for the hearing last time to continue sitting for that hearing, but I don't know that you're mandated to, to follow that.
Well, since there was more information at the last meeting, I, uh, my inclination is to, have Mr. Katz sit as a voting member on this meeting, um, unless Mr. Perez objects, in which case he'll sit.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Jonathan Perez speaking. I do not object and I agree with the, uh, approach and recommendation.
All right, then the next item on the agenda is a public hearing in the matter of E M. and E E. Bover Senior, co-trustees, two thirty-seven Hanover Street Extension, tax map sixty-four, lot two, zoned R three. Applicant requests a special exception pursuant to Article seven, Section seven oh two point one, to permit a change from one non-conforming use vehicular repair to another non-conforming use, storage and recycling facility. Um, is there anybody here representing the applicant in this matter?
I am. Eugene Bover Junior?
Mr. Chair, if, if I may, just for a second, I apologize. This is, uh, Tim, this is Tim Corwin. Sorry, I didn't introduce myself actually at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, Tim Corwin, senior planner with the, uh, planning department. Um, ju- just to help things, uh, go as smoothly as possible, we just wanted to, uh, remind at everyone at the beginning of each individual public hearing, how, how we're going to proceed, which is essentially the same as, as, you know, as, as, as we usually do, but, um, we just wanted to, to explain it as clearly as possible so that we're not talking over each other and that, and that sort of thing. Um, so, so this hearing was continued from the last meeting. Um, I think the applicant gave a short, a short presentation and then there were a number of butters who, um, or residents from the neighborhood who spoke last time, expressing some concerns about the proposal, and then the, um, the applicant submitted some additional material, uh, following, uh, last, the, the last meeting at the request of the board to further explain what it is, is that's being proposed and, uh, to, to respond to some of the, uh, the concerns that were raised. So, tonight, the, the suggestion is to, uh, allow the applicant to provide, to, um, give whatever presentation or additional information that they'd like to do tonight. Um, and then, uh, the board can ask questions, of course, you can ask questions at any time, but, um, it'd be better if we could be a little bit more, um, regimented, I suppose, about this tonight. Allow the applicant an opportunity to, to speak, then ask questions from the board, and then turn it over to, uh, members of the public. Um, when, when, when the, when the chair does that, what we would ask is that we, it's sort of a two-step process. When we turn it, when we turn it back to the public for their comments, the first step is to just ask everyone who is here and to state their name for the record. Um, I suppose the chair could ask some, something along the lines of who, who, you know, is, is there anyone here from the public to provide comment or testimony? And then whoever is here, uh, whether on, on the phone or online, should sort of speak up and just say, yes, my name is such and such, and so we'll have to wade through those a little bit in, in case people are talking over each other. But we want to take, we basically want to take an inventory of who's here to speak from the public and then, um, and then, Mr. Chair, or maybe with help from the moderator, I'm not quite sure, will, will go through each one, uh, and get their, and get their comments. And then following that, um, the applicant, applicant can come back and provide a response to anything that they've heard. And of course, the, uh, the, um, board can continue to ask questions. Once all of the information has been vetted, if you will, um, we would strongly recommend that the board continue the hearing until, uh, April twentieth, so that staff can gather additional information, um, or not additional information, but just additional public input from anyone, uh, that was unable to join the meeting tonight, uh, as a result of technical difficulties. Uh, so that at the April twentieth meeting, uh, staff would present any comments that we've received to the board. The applicant would, of course, at that time ha- have an opportunity to respond to any comments that we received. And once that's done, the board can finally close the public hearing and enter into, enter into deliberation.
Just for the edification of the board, that recommendation that we postpone or hold off on deliberation and decision until April twentieth is not particular to this case. It's partic- it, it applies to all cases that we hear until we can meet again.
Correct. Correct, yeah, exactly. It, it has, it has no, it applies to every, every case, no matter who shows up. That's correct.
What the staff recommendation is that for every case, we have a second meeting in order to make sure that everybody who wants to be heard is heard before we enter a decision.
Right.
So we're not singling you out, Mr. Bover?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
All right, all right, um.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I, I need to interject here. Uh, this is Al Patterson. Um, I'm gonna recuse myself from this hearing. I've learned of a confluence of interest, so I will not be sitting in on this hearing.
All right, um, I would ask, let's see, um, Mr. Newlove or Mr. McDonough, you were both present at the last hearing and I don't recall, uh, which of you last sat on this. Would one of you like to volunteer to be a voting member for this decision?
I'm happy to do that. If Mr. Newlove would like to do it, I'm happy to have him do it also.
I'm, I'm perfectly fine passing on this one.
All right, Mr. McDonough, you're a voting member on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Bover, are you still there?
I am here.
Well, why don't you proceed with your presentation?
So, sorry, Mr. Chair, just, um, one, one more point. This is, uh, Tim Corwin again. I, I, we have the, I have the ability to share my screen, so if there's something that, um, the applicant or the board wants everyone to see, I can, I can pull that up, hopefully, and then I can share my screen so everyone can see and refer to it. But until I get specific direction or request from someone to do that, I'll, I'll, I, I won't. So I'll just wait until I hear from somebody who wants to take advantage of that. Thank you, sorry.
Okay. Mr. Bover?
I am Eugene Bover Junior. I'm here on the behalf of my parents, Eugene and Eleanor Bover, who co-own two thirty-seven Hanover Street in Lebanon, New Hampshire. For many years, the building and land at two thirty-seven Hanover Street was rented to the Muffler House and Rent-A-Rack, a vehicle repair and car rental business. The Muffler House closed at the end of October, two thousand nineteen, and the building has been occupied, unoccupied since then. We have been seeking a tenant for the building since November of last year. We have not had any interest from another vehicle repair shop. Am I still here?
I can hear you fine.
Yep.
Okay, I just lost everyone on the screen, but I will continue to, uh, go on.
Yep.
So we have been seeking a tenant for the building since November of last year. We have not had any interest from another vehicle maintenance shop. The only other suitable tenant we have found is Nordic Waste Services, who operates a small trash business. This is why we are requesting a special exception to change from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. As I previously stated, Nordic Waste is a small family-owned recycling and trash collection business. They have six employees, two full-time and four part-time. Their hours of operation are Monday through Friday, six thirty A M. to four P M., and they work a few hours on Saturdays. They currently utilize three vehicles, one trash truck, two pickup trucks, and one dump trailer. Nordic Waste is not a public recycling facility and are not open to the public for trash or recycling drop-offs. The building at two thirty-seven Hanover Street will not change. I am, have a new fence being installed to replace the old one that encloses the outside storage area. But other than that, no changes are planned for the exterior of the building, other than cosmetics such as painting, siding, and perhaps a little landscaping. We believe that Nordic Waste will create less traffic and noise than the Muffler House did as Nordic Waste isn't open to the public and has less vehicles and employees. I don't believe the utilities will be more. We project they will be less. I also don't believe that there should be any concern about groundwater contamination as Nordic Waste does not handle any hazardous waste. Nordic Waste is a trucking company. They pick up trash and take it to the landfill. They do not leave trash in their truck overnight. Sorting of all other recyclable aluminum, tin, plastic, paper, and cardboard will be completed inside the building and therefore rodents, small animals, smells should not be a problem. I believe I have tried to address the concerns of the surrounding landowners and the board, and I have laid out our plan on how Nordic Waste will utilize the property. I request that the town grant our application for a special exception. I'd be happy to try to answer any other questions or review my letter and exhibits previously filed with the board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bover. Um, it's now an opportunity for the board to ask questions and I will go through the roll, um, with the voting members first and then, uh, the non-voting members. Mr. McDonough, do you have any questions?
Uh, I do. There was an issue that was raised last time about the wetlands and that particular piece of property. Is that being addressed this evening?
It can be. We're, we're not trying to do any other footprint than, than the building already exists and we're not aware of any wetlands that we're utilizing now.
And then, and I guess I heard you say that in terms of hazardous waste, that was an issue that was raised by butters and neighbors at the last hearing. And is your position, there will be no hazardous waste that's brought onto the site?
Correct.
Thank you. I have no further questions at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Katz?
Uh, yeah, hi. So, um, yeah, a few questions. So, when you talk about the, uh, sorting of metal and moving it around, where is that gonna be done? Is that gonna happen inside, uh, the building or is that gonna happen outside in the yard?
No, that was gonna happen inside the building.
Okay, is there any noise that's created from that that would be heard past the property lines?
Nope, it's all hand sorted. It ju- it's all hand sorted.
Okay, and then in paragraph ten of your application, when you talk about the rubbish truck that's there, uh, and that no garbage is kept on site. So what happens? The truck leaves empty, does its garbage runs, drops it off at the landfill, and then comes back empty?
Correct.
Are they cleaned before they come back? Is there any residue that's kept there overnight?
I, I, there will be just what, whatever was in the truck.
Gotcha. Okay, um, and then in terms of the hours, uh, I see there's a, a Monday through Friday, six thirty A M. to four P M. in paragraph two. Uh, is there any, uh, estimate of concentration of when you believe that the, uh, greatest intensity of use would be during that time? Is there sort of a substantial drop-off in the morning and pickup in the afternoon, or is it equally distributed the whole day?
They usually, they usually leave in the morning and then don't, don't return till the end of the day. Some of their routes may change and they may make one stop back to the, to the office or their, you know, their business- or their, you know, their business hub, but they they basically are leaving are leaving as far as the major rubbish truck is concerned.
So what's happening during the day? Is there sorting going on on site during the day? You know, so explain to me like the metal sorting and recycling that goes on and what goes on physically on site and what time that would be typically happening.
So that is supposedly later in the day when they after they've collected the recyclables, and then they will return them and then sort them later in the afternoon. And then they and then they bring the recyclables to where where they need to go.
Okay. All right, thank you. Those are all my questions.
You're welcome.
Mr. Nash?
This is Dan Nash. Yes, I'm here. I had to unmute. I had expected a site plan. We didn't see any kind of a site plan that shows parking vehicles or anything like that.
I I included some aerial shots of the building for exhibits. I believe the parking exhibit. Hold on one second. I won't.
Exhibit D?
Yes. So Exhibit D shows the building and shows the area. It shows the property when the Muffler House was in business and where all their parking was.
My concern is that this is Dan Nash again. Quite frankly, the the aerial view makes it look like a junkyard, and that's not what's supposed to be in the R3 zone. And also, you mentioned landscaping. We have no plan that indicates what, if any, landscaping intends to go in.
The landscaper was only trying to clean, just cleaning up the air, the area, the existing area that's there. And we're only talking about a total of six employees right now, and then their parking for their other four vehicles. So I think the aerial photo shows, I would think enough parking in any of those existing areas. They also intend to keep the vehicles inside the garage, the three garage bays.
This is Dan Nash. I understand intent to keep vehicles inside a bay, but sometimes, just like your household garage, it gets full and they can't. So what we as a board need to know is what are the maximum vehicles that will be parked outside on the site at any one time so that our planning staff can have some kind of a control and a limit to what's there?
Okay, even with expansion, I couldn't see any more than 20 vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That it, Mr. Nash?
Yes, that's it.
Ms. Mercer?
Yeah, this is Jennifer Mercer. I noticed in the hours of operation, there's a Saturday morning food waste route mentioned. Can you talk about what that entails, and does the food waste go back to the to the facility, or does it go away? What is that?
That was something they were just starting to put together, and it wasn't going to back to the facility. They're at this point, they're not moving forward with any of that, but they may want to have some hours on Saturday.
So with the food waste, so if they pick up the food waste, then where would they take it?
I believe they bring it to the landfill.
Okay. That's my only question.
Mr. Bovair, if they bring it to the landfill, are they going to bring it before it closes at 2 o'clock on Saturday, or is it going to be stored over the weekend on site?
No, it will be brought to the landfill. They're not storing anything on site.
Okay. Oh, this was William Koppenheffer. Let's see. Mr. Newlove, do you have any questions?
All my questions have been asked by others. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Perez?
I do have a couple of questions, if that's okay, Mr. Chair. So this is this is Jonathan Perez. So Mr. Bovair, I did go to the website of Nordic Waste Services, which is a pretty complete website. One of the things that they offer is a commercial dumpster service where they provide dumpsters and empty them out for for commercial businesses. I noticed the application refers to to one dumpster on site, which would be used by the in the operation of the business. I'm wondering, are they planning to store dumpsters perhaps in the stockade area as part of their business? Do you know the answer to that by chance?
I believe if they had any dumpsters new before they've gone to the customers, they would store them in the stockade area on the property.
I also noted that they that they also provide roll-off dumpster services from their website. And so I would think, I'm not voting on this one, but I would think we would want to have a little bit more specificity around around some of those types of materials and equipment, because as I noted, according to the application, it speaks to one dumpster on site only for use by the business. So I'm trying to kind of figure out, well, if they're if they're providing dumpster service and dumpsters to their clients, and this is their place of business. You know, I think you answered the question, Mr. Bovair, but it's a little bit inconsistent with their what's in the application. I would point that out.
Okay. All I think was entailed on the application is just meant that as a business, they were going to have one dumpster for their business on site for their rubbish. The rest of the ones are at their clients, and they're they're picking them up at their client and delivering the rubbish to the landfill.
And presumably, they're returning the dumpster back to their client, which, you know, I'm not suggesting there's an issue here. I'm just I just want to make sure that we we understand all the information, like how many how many dumpsters might be on site, even though they're empty, where they plan to store them, those sorts of things. So that's just a comment, Mr. Chair. I don't have anything further. I just noticed that that's between the application and the website.
Does any board member, based on what you've heard thus far, have any further questions?
Mr. Chair, Al Patterson.
Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
I know I'm not voting on this as I choose myself, but I just want to remind the board, it seems like when we get things like this, we tend to have issues that require enforcement in order to make sure a the regulations are complied with. I'm not suggesting that they won't be, but I'm just hearing a lot of ifs and speculation, so I'm I'm just want want to make sure the board is is also hopefully hearing those things so that we don't put a lot of undue stress on the on the city, if you will, later down the road, because we did have many complaints from abutters or concerns, I should say, that I think need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the board?
Yes, this is Jeremy. I have one more question for the the applicant. Can I go ahead?
Sure.
Okay, so just a question. When Rent-A-Rack and Muffler House were in business and operating, do you happen to recall what their hours of operation were?
Um, no, I don't. I apologize.
Could you ballpark it?
Mr. Katz? This is William Koppenheffer. I Bob Moulton was a client of mine. I used to take my car there, and I believe his hours were eight to five.
Okay, and I guess if we could ask Mr. Bovair, does that sound like that's a sensible range of opening hours?
Yes.
Okay, so eight o'clock to five o'clock. All right, thank you. No other questions.
Is there anything further you would like to add, Mr. Bovair?
No, not at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Corwin, we're now ready to accept comments from the public.
Yes. This is this is Tim Corwin. Can we can we try and take a roll call here of who is online or or who is on the phone that would like to speak to this application? And I will I will write down your names. So wait, wait. And then and then be sure to be sure to unmute yourself before before you try and speak. If you're on Teams online, there's if you just hover towards the middle bottom of your screen, you can you'll see a microphone. You just click on that, make sure there's no line through it. And then if you're on the phone and you're muted, I think it's star six to unmute yourself. So is there anyone is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak on this application? Just state state your name. You should give it about 10 seconds or so because of the potential delay. Again, if there are any members of the public who wish to speak on this application tonight, please state your name.
Tim, this is Dan Nash. There aren't any people that are silenced by the moderator, are there? That control setting might override the individuals trying to get in.
Okay, let me let me check on that.
No, I I heard that, Tim. This is David Brooks. I can mute any person on the call. I cannot unmute them. Each individual can unmute themselves either by, as Tim said, moving the mouse around on the screen and and until the buttons pop up and clicking unmute on the microphone icon, or if they're on the phone. I haven't muted anyone on the phone. But if you feel like if if somebody somebody is there that I can't see, press star six to unmute.
I'm not sure there is anyone. We haven't heard from anyone, so, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Hi, it's Tim Brusso speaking. Am I coming through?
Okay.
Cool. Okay, I'm at 200 Hanover Street, Ward Two.
Tim, can you spell your last name?
Certainly. B R O U S S E A U.
Go ahead, Mr. Brusso.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't know why other people aren't coming in. I know that most of the neighbors were planning to be on this this evening, so I don't know what's happened to that.
Mr. Brusso?
Yes.
Before you go any further,
Yes.
if any of those neighbors don't get through, can't get through, please tell them to get in touch with the Planning and Zoning Office, because we are not going to issue any kind of decision until we give everybody an opportunity to be heard, and the decision will not be reached until April 20th.
I was tuned in earlier and listened to that, and I certainly will contact all of them and let them know that without question.
Thank you.
May I move ahead with
Yes.
my thoughts? Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. One thing I wanted to mention is that the I believe that the hours of the Muffler House were correct, eight to five, and occasionally they might have been there an hour or so later, and they did work some Saturday mornings until around noon time, just to clarify that. The last couple of years at the Muffler House, there were the owners, Bob and Joanne Moulton, and I believe there were two employees working, and I don't believe there are any more than that. I could be mistaken, but I don't think so. I was a customer of theirs also. So just to clarify that, one of the things that Mr. Bovair said is that Nordic Waste has two full-time employees, the owners, and four part-time employees. I'm assuming that the cost of the rental property is going to be higher than the property that they have down behind the railroad tracks on the River and White River Junction. So I'm assuming that they're going to want to expand, and if they're going to get into a larger, more expensive property, they're most likely going to want to expand. When they expand, it's going to mean more vehicles, more employees, more noise, and it's certainly going to mean more dumpsters, and it's going to mean more recycling bins. I also noticed, I just quickly looked at the application online earlier today, and I noticed that it said that the metals would be kept in a recycling bin on site until, obviously, I would think there's enough to go and sell it someplace or wherever they would do with that. If anyone other than me has been in that building, there are some service bays where you can keep vehicles. I think you can keep three. You could probably put four vehicles inside there, maybe even five smaller vehicles, because they've taken the lifts out now. And then the rest of the building is in storage. I don't know its physical condition, but I would think it's going to be difficult to keep dumpsters inside to sort waste and to sort metal and to sort other things like that. And I would think over the course of time, they're bound to come outside without any question. I also think that recyclables, if they collect them sometime later in the day and get back with them, they're going to have a hard time making it any place to get rid of them. I think the commercial scales close at the landfill around four o'clock, except on Saturday, I think it closes at 12 or 1:00. So there's going to be stuff on site, and I would just think that if they're going to keep profitable and do what I think any normal human being would want to do and grow and prosper, it's going to mean quite a lot larger operation than it sounds like. And the other thing I want to say also, it seems just very unrealistic that waste isn't going to wind up stored on site. I don't see how it can't be, quite frankly, with with four or five people running around, they can't, I would think they'd have a hard time getting rid of all of it. So the other thing is is that I think going back
Is anyone else hearing?
Pardon me? Should I? Am I talking too much? I can be.
No, you're not talking too much.
Okay.
It's fine, Mr. Brusso.
Thank you. I also note that I've lost my track of thought. I apologize for that. But I think basically, it's if it's going to expand, if they're going to store dumpsters there, and they're going to store trash there, and they're going to store the little recyclable bins that that they want to have for customers, it's just going to be a whole it's just gonna be a, a whole lot bigger operation than it ever has been before. Uh, 50 years ago, I believe it was Thompson's Garage. It was actually a franchise Dodge dealership. When my wife and I purchased this property, which was 35 years ago, uh, Thompson's was just clothing, and that's when Bob and Joanne Moulton took, took it over and turned it into the Muffler House. It was always a garage, and I guess all of us accepted that. Uh, I think all of us are having a really hard time swallowing that it could be a recycling center. Because a recycling center, particularly if there's going to be food waste, sort of sounds like a garbage center, which I know is not a proper thing to say, but it certainly sounds that way. So, uh, w- we all have a lot of concern that this is just not going to be what we want in our neighborhood. And I, I think there are an awful lot of people walking by, running by, and driving by that are gonna feel exactly the same thing. The problem is, is that they don't know what could potentially happen, and fortunately, we do, and we're able to say something. I think that's pretty much what I wanted to say, and I appreciate you letting me say it.
Thank you, Mr. Brusso. Does anybody from, does anybody from the board have any questions for Mr. Brusso? Not hearing any. Uh, Mr. Brusso, thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you. I'm gonna try to shut this off. I don't know how to do that. Okay, here we go. Thank you very much.
Mr. Brooks, do we have anybody else from the public?
Um, no, sir. I don't, I don't believe so. Uh, there's a, uh, there's a Philip Webster.
Okay.
That's the only other name that I see, I believe.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Well, can we get Mr. Webster connected?
Just, uh, he needs to unmute his microphone if he cares to, uh, participate in the meeting.
And he may be here for the next hearing.
That's true.
Mr. Webster, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm here for the Shaw Street.
Oh, uh, this is not the Shaw Street hearing. That's the next one.
Yeah.
So we look, we look forward to hearing from you then.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recognize any other names who are not a part of the meeting.
Yeah, there, you're right. There's no one else. So... Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Um, I, I think the chair might have, uh, froze there for a second. It's probably a good opportunity for Mr. Bovair to respond to Mr. Brusso's comments.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Tim, do you want me to take over? What?
Uh, yes, thank you, John.
Yep, yes, Mr. Bovair. Please go ahead.
Um, just, Mr. Brusso's comments is just, the, the business is not that large, and they don't plan on expanding that big there at this location.
Mr. Bovair, could I ask a, an additional question? Um, I also have been looking at their website, and it is waste services. So they do both waste and, uh, recycling, it looks like, and they definitely offer containers and dumpsters and things. So presumably, they have a, an inventory of those things that come and go. Um, do you have any sense of what their excess inventory, their onsite inventory storage is like for the, for the containers that are, um, held, you know, in reserve to offer to customers?
The containers they talked about were the, the, the roll-away rubbers containers that they offer, offer to the public. And, and they're either gonna store those inside the building when they come in new, or they're distributing them to their customers.
Okay, I mean, their website also says that they offer dumpsters of multiple sizes.
At, at this point, they, they don't have any dumpsters.
Okay.
I think I will, I can verify that with, with them.
So let me ask you this. If we were to ask for, um, Mr. Nash talked about a site plan. Is that something you could work with them on, uh, showing where the employees would park and where they would store things with, with kind of some, some numbers and things? Because to, to convert from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, they really can't expand the operation. It has to be comparable to what was there before. So I think we need to have information on sort of the numbers of, y- you said up to 20 vehicles, but then the kind of a site plan that shows the onsite activity, um, storage, if, if they are gonna be offering dumpsters eventually, since it is on their website. I mean, you're saying they don't currently have certain things. We could certainly write it so they can never expand what they have now, but we don't exactly know what they have now either. So we kind of have an incomplete picture.
Correct. I can, I can do that. I can, we can send another, another plan showing where they'll utilize the parking and where they'll utilize any other storage.
And I think how many containers, types of containers, sizes of containers, their website says, uh, two, four, six, and eight-yard rearload dumpsters. Um, they talk about, uh, commercial, um, dumpster service. They talk about roll-off containers. So we, I think we need a more complete picture in order to understand if it's really a comparable activity to switch. So they can't, so expanding the, expanding the use is, is different than just, um, changing to something that's different but comparable in, in level of impact. I don't know about, um, others, though, and I, do we have, uh, Mr. Koppenheffer back, David?
It looks like he's, it looks, I can see him on the bo, I can see his initials on the bottom of the screen.
Yeah, I mean, I see his name. I believe he's back.
Bill?
Yeah.
Did you catch any of that?
Uh, yeah, I did. My picture's not up, but...
Uh, we don't, we don't need your picture. We can hear you.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to put it up, that's fine, but we can hear you, so...
I, I don't know how.
Uh, I was picking up on, on, uh, picking up where, where you froze and left us for a minute, I think, and, um, asking some questions about the numbers and types of dumpsters and going back to Dan's point about a site plan. And, uh, I guess my, my suggestion would be that we, we send the applicant back to create a, a robust site plan. But I, that would be up to the board as a whole. So that's where I was going, while you, while you were away.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could ask Mr. Bo, Bovair just two quick questions, please?
Certainly.
Uh, Mr. Bovair, thank you for your, your comments tonight. I was wondering, was there consideration or was it be possible for someone from Nordic to come in and address the board? We're, we're peppering you with lots of questions about the details of this, and they may be in areas that, uh, haven't been fully fleshed out with you. Couldn't someone from Nordic come and assist the board at the next meeting?
Yes, for sure.
I think that would be considered helpful. The next question is, at the last meeting, we heard lots of, uh, not lots, that we heard uh, butters and neighbors coming in and talking about how they felt that this would have a, uh, an effect on the character of the neighborhood that they felt was adverse. And how, how do you address that with them? What would you say to them when they raise those concerns?
Well, we're just trying to explain that how small this company is and what, what little footprint they're gonna have on the property. And anything that is gonna be there is gonna be in the enclosed behind the stockade fence or in the building besides the regular vehicles. Are you still there?
I am still there. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, is there anybody else who has any further questions for Mr. Bovair?
This is Dan Nash. Uh, one of the concerns I had with the exhibit is vehicles parking in the right-of-way. For the site plan, I don't, it would be nice to have a survey. I don't think we need it for the site plan, but I think before we grant a building permit for this activity, that they should have a boundary survey and make sure that their vehicles don't park in the right-of-way. Uh, there's a lot of discussion about pedestrian traffic in the area, and I just think it would, you know, good fences make good neighbors, so we at least know where the property line is. And then he, uh, the new tenant keeps his vehicles parked within his property. We can make sure that that happens.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. Is there anything further from the board? Can you hear me, Tim?
Yes, sir.
All right, then, is there a motion? Now, Mr. Bovair, the next meeting on April 20th, from your tenant, your prospective tenant, uh, to the meeting, and from the tenor of Mr. Nash's question regarding parking, um, some assurances that the parking is not going to be in the right-of-way.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
Does anybody have anything further?
Mr. Chair, this is, this is Tim, Tim Corwin. Um, just ask that, uh, the applicant, please submit whatever additional information that they're going to submit by, uh, the end of the day next Monday, uh, April 13th, so that we can...
Tim fro, Tim, you froze there.
Uh, just, just asking if the applicant can please provide whatever additional information that they're going to provide uh, by no later than the end of the day next Monday, uh, April 13th.
Okay, thank you, Tim. I will.
Mr. Bovair, that's in order that we can make it public information before the meeting on the 20th. Okay?
Very good.
And that, and just, just to reiterate, that's the same deadline that we're making, if you will, for the, uh, for the submission of additional public input and, and testimony, comments, and questions.
Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting until April 20th?
This is Dan Nash. So moved.
Is there a second?
Uh, I'd like to move that we continue it, not adjourn it.
Oh, right. Sorry. Thank you. Mr. Nash, is that okay with you?
That's okay with me.
All right.
So I'll second, I'll second the motion to continue.
All right. Is, is there, uh, any discussion? Okay. Mr. McDonough, how do you vote?
I'm in favor of continuing the hearing.
Mr. Katz, how do you vote?
In favor.
Uh, Mr. Nash?
In favor.
Ms. Mercer?
Yes, in favor.
And I vote in favor. The, the vote is unanimous. This hearing is continued until April 20th. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a new public hearing in the matter of Joshua Rudner, 15 Shaw Street, Tax Mat 92, Lot 153, Zoned R2. Applicant requests a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section 703.1 of the zoning ordinance to reconstruct and expand an existing front porch that is non-conforming to the 20-foot minimum front yard setback. So for purposes of this hearing, all of the regular members of the zoning board are, I assume, present and able to participate in this hearing. Ms. Mercer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, affirmative.
Uh, Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Perez?
Yes, I'm here and, uh, able to hear this application.
As am I. Is there anybody representing the applicant present?
Yes, Philip Webster. Do you hear me?
Uh, we can hear you. Are you participating by telephone?
Yes.
Okay. Would you, um, tell us what it is that you would like the board to do? And we'll go from there.
So my name's Philip Webster. I'm with High Meadow Builders. I am the builder on the project for Josh Rudner.
Mr. Webster, how do you spell Philip?
P-H-I-L-I-P.
Thank you. Tell us about this project.
So this is a non-conforming, uh, front porch that was existing. We are looking to just, uh, add, add seven feet to, to one side and six feet to the other side, but we are not looking to come any further towards the sidewalk, um, which is the non-conforming, uh, part. We're looking to stay within the same footprint off the building that the, that the previous porch was.
Okay. Anything further?
Uh, we're, we are extend, extending the porch down the, I believe it's the northeast side of the building, uh, but there is no, uh, no boundary, um, restrictions that were, would be violating, um, on that side. So setbacks are, setbacks are all well over what they need to be.
Is there anything further, Mr. Webster?
Nope.
Mr. Patterson, do you have any questions?
I do not. I, fairly straightforward.
Mr. Nash, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Perez, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I do, I do have a couple of questions just based on my review of the application.
Fine.
Uh, so, thank you, Mr. Webster. I, I am, I'm looking at the drawing, which is the final page of the application, which, which basically has, has two areas that are apparently the new sections. So I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the project in total. The, the existing front porch from the picture is completely enclosed, right, including walls and a roof?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and the new sections would be similarly in, enclosed with walls and a roof?
They'll have wall, they'll have a roof and a deck. They won't be enclosed with walls. This will be, this will now become just a, a open farmer-style porch.
And, and is that the case for the existing front porch, or will that continue to have walls and roof?
Nope, that'll become, become open as well. It'll all get rebuilt because the existing porch is, is sinking into the ground because it wasn't on, it never had proper support underneath it.
Okay, that, that's, that's my question. I don't, I don't have any further questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you for those responses.
Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Mercer, do you have any questions?
No, actually, Mr. Perez's questions answered mine. Thank you.
And I have no questions for you, Mr. Webster. Thank you for your presentation.
Yes, no problem.
Is there anybody from the public Mr. Brooks, that wishes to be heard on this matter?
Mr. Chair, I do not recognize any names other than board members and Mr. Webster who are on the call.
Mr. Webster, I feel bad about telling you this, but we have to keep this hearing open until April 20th in-
I understand with the circumstances, no problem.
We're going to delay deliberation and decision. Well, we're going to continue this hearing until our deliberation and decision on April 20th. Is there a motion from the board?
This is Dan Nash. I'll make a motion that we continue this agenda item to 20 April.
Is there a sec?
Al Patterson, I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion? All right, we'll have a roll call though. Mr. Patterson?
I approve to continue the, the hearing.
Mr. Perez?
I, in favor.
Mr. Nash?
In favor.
Ms. Mercer?
Yes, in favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Webster. We look forward to talking with you on the 20th.
It sounds good. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Is there other business to come before the meeting tonight?
No.
I would. I would what? Mr. Corwin sent out an email today about a seminar on Wednesday. I would encourage all of those of you who have not signed up to sign up for that seminar. There's been a number of board members who have already. I think that is, that it has the potential to help us be a better board.
Mr. Chair, just a quick note on that. David brought to my attention that there is a discrepancy between some of the materials on the NHMA website regarding the date. It's not, it's not clear whether the seminar is on April 8th or April 15th. But if you sign up, you will get a confirmation notice, and you'll, I guess we'll find out when we, when we get our confirmation notices. David did email NHMA today for clarification, but we haven't heard back yet. But it's, it's either April 8th or April 15th, so I still encourage you to sign up then.
Great. Are there any staff comments, Mr. Corwin?
No, just thank you for everyone. Thank you, everyone, for, for your patience, and hopefully you don't have to do this too much longer. But thank you.
What, are you saying there was poor leadership here?
No, you didn't. No, 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 not at all.
All right.
Mr. Chair, you have a voice for conference calls.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Dan Nash, so moved.
Is there a second?
Al Patterson, second it.
You can all talk at once, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
See you on the 20th.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Bye-bye.